Hey, everybody. Good evening. It's September 9th. I'd like to welcome you to the Town of Rhinebeck Town Board meeting. Would everybody please stand for the pledge? Five parties. United States of America and two Republicans. One nation, individual liberty and justice. I'd like a motion to approve our prior minutes of August 12, 2019.
So moved.
Thanks, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. I'd like to give a quick and heartfelt thank you to Williams Lumber for donating all of the lumber for our handicap parking area at the new pavilion. So, thank you. They're a great community member, and we appreciate it. I'm going to hold other announcements and any liaison reports to the end of the meeting, and I'm going to take the meeting out of order. Brendan Carney, our county legislator, is here, and since she has a meeting at the county, I'm going to let her go at the top. So, thanks for coming.
Sure. Thanks for having me. Good evening, everybody. Happy September. I am sorry, because I will be helping out this meeting after I finish giving you all my updates. We have session tonight. One of the things we will be doing is finally returning the Amtrak station to Amtrak, which I know is near and dear to all of our hearts, something I was working on as the town board. We hopefully move improvements and concerns about the station forward. I expect the board to approve the transfer. It had been in the county's hands for quite a time.
Is there any issues with this? This is, just so the public and everybody knows, this is the county resolution to settle the avalorum tax dispute that the Town of Rhinebeck has had with Amtrak, and settle the past due, and we on our end have moved forward and are not charging avalorum taxes, so Amtrak will be guaranteed clear title to their station. And it's not contentious, though?
No. We moved it right out of committee on Thursday, so I don't expect any difficulty tonight at all.
Thank you.
We're happy that will happen. Hopefully it will help. Couple other, well, we don't have too many other Rhinebeck-specific things. The near and dear to Allen's heart, Are You OK! program is up and running again. Our seniors can get signed up to be checked on by the county once a day with a phone call. I really encourage people to sign up for that program. It's available on the Office of Aging, and if you need any help, don't hesitate to let me know. I'd love to see enrollment go up. We, in recent weeks, approved of all the Duchess Community College annual budget. We also approved the funding for the new air study facility at the Mid-Hudson Regional Airport, which I think will be important. Hopefully, we're bringing students outside of Duchess County to school in Duchess County for that facility. So that was something I was really happy to be a part of. We completed a traffic study at the end of July on Slate Quarry Road out in the Clinton portion, not in our Rhinebeck portion here, but in the Clinton, and I hope that'll be part of further studies. So I'm awaiting the information from that to see what kind of suggestions we can make about how to make Slate Quarry a little bit safer. We also, this is near and dear to many people's hearts in Rhinebeck, I know, we passed an animal tethering law, and also an animal abuse registry will now be maintained by the Duchess County Sheriff's Office, and this is, has wider implications just beyond the welfare of animals. Certainly, people who abuse animals sometimes struggle in other areas as well. So the county will be addressing it in that way, and I'm pleased that that happened. Finally, tonight, we will take up independent redistricting, which I've been working hard on for months. Right now, the legislators, the legislature sets our election districts, and I'd really like to see that determined by independent committees. So I imagine there'll be some debate tonight on the floor, but I'm hopeful that we'll be passing a resolution to have that for all of us. It's kind of nice going into the political season knowing there won't be a change like that. It could be great for the voters of Duchess County.
Thank you, Brendan. Yeah, any questions? Any concerns? No. Chase after the question down if you can. Thank you. We let us know. We text me, let me know how. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming.
Yeah, absolutely. Good night, everybody.
Good night. We have Mark Coviallo. Is Mark here? No. Mark Coviallo, Director of the Duchess County Division of Veterans Service of Navy Hill. He's late. And Eric Ryback, we had a presentation for Panda. I will, I will move on then. Before we open our public hearing, because we have Warren here, I wanted to take privilege of chair and move our agenda around a little bit. I am looking for a motion for, that's okay. For item number 13, Resolution 2019-211, commencing the local law adoption process for Local Law 2B Number of 2019 entitled "A Local Law to Establish a Community Choice Aggregation Energy Program in the Town of Rhinebeck." Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. And I think we have, hi, come on up.
Hi. I'm Glenn Weber. I'm from Juliusus. Thanks for having me. With me tonight is Hannah. Last time you saw Jeff. Today, you have Hannah Hart from Hudson Valley Energy. We're the partners, we're the partner administrators for the Hudson Valley Community Power Program, which is the name of the program here. Now, 10 municipalities in the Hudson Valley that have banded together to form a community choice aggregation program. That's the law that you have in front of you. And essentially, that law, it's a purely enabling law. It just, it authorizes the town, resting on their home rule authority, to implement such a program should they choose. It's non-binding. It just gives you the authority to do so should you choose to do, to go forward with the program. And the program itself is a clean energy buying program that municipalities throughout the Hudson Valley and in Westchester and several parts of the state have already launched on our operational with a program in which they've banded together, pooled their collective energy demand, and then went out to the market to see what their collective buying power could bring back in terms of price and in terms of source. So right now, those, the first six municipalities launched in July. Next group of four, I mentioned 10 earlier, that next group of four is going to be launching within the next couple of months here, and that's for a 100% New York State clean energy supply, electricity supply, at a fixed rate, which is lower than the historical utility average price, the essential Hudson price for their standard sort of brown power mix. So that's the basic sort of program. I know we should keep it very brief tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions. And Hannah and Hudson Valley Energy, they're really the boots on the ground, they're the local organizers, and they've been fielding thousands, literally thousands, of phone calls from the six communities that have launched the program so far, and they're doing all of the on-the-ground education and mostly public events and outreach and things like that. So we're happy to answer any questions.
I think we're just accepting the local law tonight. We will send a public hearing. Basically, as Glenn said, this will enable Rhinebeck to join a consortium of other local municipalities and get our energy from 100% renewable, non-fossil sources. It would be offered to our residents, and residents would have to opt out of it. It's guaranteed to be less expensive than what you're paying now and cleaner. You can opt out if you don't want to do it. If you want to pay more for fossil-based fueled energy, you can do that. You can jump in or out anytime you want. But here in the Town of Rhinebeck, we support minimizing our carbon footprint and going to renewable sources whenever possible.
And I should just mention, because that's a good point, that that opt-out that the supervisor was mentioning, coming in and out of the program, that's without any fee, there's never any exit fee to get out. It's totally the consumer's choice, but the town gets into a contract to offer that fixed price as the default. And then folks within the town can choose whether to accept that default or to opt to a slightly less expensive sort of brown, brown fixed price, or to leave the program entirely.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there any other discussion or any questions from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We need to set our public hearing for this local law, John, which we will do at our next town board meeting, which is?
Twenty-eight, September 28.
Okay. It is set for, our public meeting will be set for 6:00 PM on October 28. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Also, I'm going out of order here because we need Warren for this. I have Resolution 2019-212 commencing the local law adoption process for a law amending Chapter 125 of the Town of Rhinebeck code to create a new historic and archaeological site preservation law. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Chauncey. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Warren, do you want to say anything about this?
Yeah, briefly, it'll be explained in more detail at the public hearing, but it's, we were asked by the planning board, I believe, to see if we could come up with a local law creating a historic preservation and archaeological site preservation law. Originally, the proposal was to create a board, and the prior town board had grappled with creating such a law was found to be too complex and a bit overkill. It's the type of law you usually find in a city that has a historic history. So we took that and went to a more modified local law, which creates an advisory committee rather than a board, and the committee will be staffed by people chosen by the town board that have particular experience or interest in historic preservation, archaeological resources. They will be advising the planning board and the town board. If the town board has an application before it that involves issues of historical, archaeological resources, and providing a recommendation similar to what the Conservation Advisory Board does, but the advice that they give will not be binding on the planning board, but the planning board can take into consideration their comments and recommendations. And it's been already vetted, I believe, might even be vetted by the planning board or certain members of the planning board, and we've amended it a little bit based on their comments, and I think this is acceptable. And so hopefully, the public will be in favor of it, and the other board members will vote to adopt.
Thank you. And, I mean, Warren and Chauncey for working on this for us. And the public hearing again for this will be on October 28 at 6:00 PM. Is there any further discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we're back to order here. I'm going to open our public hearing on a local law amending our Town Code Chapter 125 zoning in the matter of clarifying commercial solar installation screening requirements for rooftop applications, providing guidance on when screening is required, and setting forth regulations for guiding screening requirements. I'm taking public comment. Before, public comment? Public hearing?
Should we mention that we're making some changes before public comment?
Yeah, thank you.
Why don't we mention the changes that?
We are not, we cannot vote on this tonight. We have to hold this over because the County Department of Planning did come back to us with, with comments regarding this law, and while they consider it a matter of local concern, they refer the law back to the town as a local matter and believe it's good as drafted. However, they had a minor comment regarding terminology, and the terminology that they recommended we change was obscure to visual shielding that, one, breaks up a visible area of a project, and, two, mitigates adverse aesthetic impacts on views from residences and public highways, and, three, integrates the project with the surrounding landscape, but does not require a total visual barrier of the project. So the change to the local law that we are making is a definition of the word obscure, and this with input from the Duchess County Department of Planning.
So because of that change, we can still continue the public hearing, but we can't vote on it because the matter has to be under your desk for seven days for our to vote. So we vote it on the next town board meeting.
We will hold this over until the 28th. We are expecting to have more public meetings between now and then because it's budget time. So we always pull back our regularly scheduled meetings because we need to address the budget. This will be held over until our regularly scheduled meeting on the 28th of October as well. We are still taking comments. The public hearing is open, so, Michael, you can come back up if you like.
I'm Cola. Thank you, guys, for the committee for work they did on the end of this law. I realize that that was a significant input, and I appreciate what you've come up with. I do want to comment without sounding negative about that effort, that I believe you're being very generous and trying to be constructive in coming up with a solution that takes into account some of the things that have been said in this process. I'm of the opinion that by including this language about obscuring or obstructing, you are building in a difficulty for yourselves and the planning board that is not necessary. What we are talking about here is realistically changing the color and texture of existing roofs. And the concession to say that that requires some kind of obscurement or visual screening seems reasonable, except that the request that people screen roofs is not. So I appreciate where you guys have gotten to, but I want to remind you that there are lots of roofs in this town that are great for solar and cannot be obscured. And you have now limited the number of accessible sites, like Williams Lumber, with huge amounts of south-facing roof faces, where they cannot be obscured as the law is defining the visual change. And that concession, because you've heard a small group of people who are really concerned about a specific set of roofs, does not, in that context, seem reasonable. I appreciate what you've done. I hope you vote on this so we can all move forward, but I think you need to realize that sometimes what's being asked for in the other side of the discussion isn't reasonable. We really are talking about roofs. The change is not as significant as if you went from an asphalt roof to a gobblewo roof visually. It's less significant, and you're requiring a screen for it. And the only reason that there's a screening requirement even being discussed is because there is some commercial piece of this which has to do with the solar. Now, I'm looking at your agenda tonight, and it is filled with valuable, important initiatives to get more clean energy. And here, in this law, you are making it more difficult for that energy to be produced in this town on existing roof resources. I understand why, and I'm not saying this to encourage you not to do what you propose, but what's being asked is unreasonable. At some point, someone needs to stand up. It's really safe. We need the energy more than we need to control what color a roof is. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi. My name is Bob Johnson, and I'm in Rhineville, and I'd like to look for some comments about this proposal. Current Town Zoning Code 12547I14 regarding the screening of solar power plants states. The introduction of new plants is consisting of naturally appearing blend of deciduous and cadiferous species shall be required to help screen solar power plants, accessory structures, from scenic roadways, parklands, historic properties, and native residences. Now, one of the first recommendations from the zoning review committee here, after I'll refer to as the ZRC, was to add the term obscure after the existing word help, so that the law would read this way: obscuring solar power plants. The introduction of new planties consisting of a naturally appearing blend of deciduous and cadiferous species shall be required to either obscure or help obscure the solar power plants and accessory structures from scenic roadways, parklands, et cetera. Now, by keeping this paragraph as part of the ZRC's recommendation, it maintains the use of both deciduous and cadiferous species as a means of obscuring the solar power plant and the accessory structures when deformed in sites. Now, when I examined Mr. Levy's notes for the recommended screenings that were read and approved at the June 3rd ZRC meeting, in comparing it with the resolution that appeared towards tonight, there were some changes that needed to be addressed. Now, the proposal before us tonight states supplementary regulation, Section 12547 Solar Energy Systems subsection I14, by replacing the existing text with the following heading to read "obscuring of solar power plants." Now, my question is, is the paragraph that contains the information about deciduous and cadiferous trees being required to obscure or help obscure the solar power plants, accessory structures from the scenic roadways and other sites, does that better eliminate in this proposal? And I hope Mr. Levy's not here, and I don't know if you could answer that question.
We're taking public comments. We're not necessarily answering questions, so.
All right.
The law in front of you is the law that we are voting on. We are the legislative body. This is the law that we have, this is what it is.
Okay. So if this law is approved, that means you change the word, existing wording in the zoning code. Is it safe to say that?
We're here, too, as the law.
Now, in the ZRC proposal, the following subsection is added to 12547I14. So all panels on active roof should be obscured from defuse and protection properties and roadways as follows. New planties and other landscaping materials installed for the purpose of screening shall be selected to meet seasonal conditions, provide year-round screening, erosion control, and life on the site. Land selection shall be non-invasive and rated for inappropriate plant hardiness zone. New York native species are preferred. However, in the proposal before us tonight, that subsection was changed. It states, new planties and other landscaping materials installed for the purpose of obscuring shall be selected to meet erosion control needs only.
You know, I believe you're commenting on, you're not commenting on the law that's in front of us. You're commenting on a process that arrived for us to get here, and we're taking comments on the law in front of us.
Okay. Well, I'm asking here, to bring your attention to everybody, that there were changes in the law.
Yes.
Okay, that's the process part, right?
This is the law that we are proposing.
Yes, and I want to express my concerns about these changes.
You want to express concerns that the legislative body is taking a legislative action?
I understand that, but I feel it's my right under the First Amendment to express my concerns as part of public comments.
Well, please, your comment should be about the law in front of us.
Now, after reviewing this proposal, I along with my neighbor Susan refused the question why this recommendation is removed when the town board representatives expressed their opposition and voted to approve the ZRC's recommended guidelines one week earlier at the June 3rd ZRC meeting. Having attended the April, May, and June ZRC meetings, I along with Susan were able to observe and listen to a group of professionals discussing their concerns and recommendations for screening requirements for roof mounted solar farms. These professionals, from the town planner, the zoning enforcement officer, members of the zoning board of appeals, and the planning board, brought a wealth of professional knowledge and experience to this committee. We appreciated the pride of what they did and felt that the approved recommendations were in compliance with the comprehensive plan and policies found in the local waterfront revitalization program. Their recommendations would protect scenic view sheds not only within the scenic area of statewide significance and along our designated scenic roads, but in other areas throughout the town not covered by these regulatory protections. Yet, for, or for the proposal before us tonight, some of these protections have been removed, and I find that troubling. Just, I'm just going to move on to the breach part here. So we have two sides here. We have the recommendations that were presented and approved by the zoning review committee. We also have people, right? And I know in one case, an email that was sent to the zoning review that pretty much advocated eliminating those protections found in 12547I14 as well as 12548. And so who do we listen to? Do we listen to the zoning review committee, or do we listen to the other side? I feel that if the board approves this proposal down the road, it will eliminate major barriers in having roof mounted commercial solar farms from being installed in rural residential areas throughout the town, and it's going to result in new lawsuits. Lawsuit that county judge might turn around and say that the plaintiffs now have legal standing to sue, and like the other case with the Wittemberg Road residents. Creating these discordant view sheds, conflict lawsuits, all the negative ramifications that come about if the board approves this proposal certainly reflects what C. Hudson recommended that towns avoid in its online report, Clean Energy, Green Communities, A Guide to Siding Renewable Energy in Hudson Valley. C. Hudson reports all through many recommendations to towns considering and acting solar laws and projects, all of which are submitted to the ZRC and to the town board. In this particular matter, C. Hudson recommends that towns should be sensitive to local values a community conserve in order to avoid potential for public opposition in the leg. So which side is going to prevail? I would offer that the town board choose neither side and put this proposal on hold indefinitely. I would recommend that the town prohibit solar farms in rural and residential areas. What would I offer in its place? I would recommend that this board in the Rhinebeck community look to the following recommendations from C. Hudson. According to C. Hudson, towns should consider locating renewable energy facilities on marginal lands and at low conflict sites and areas. It recommends that towns consider closed landfills, referred to in its report as gray fields. It also recommends that towns consider citing renewable energy projects on properties polluted by hazardous substances or contaminants, referred to in its report as brown fields. Using these sites can generate greater public support for such energy projects, as well as mitigate public opposition and a less liberal new process. Let's reexamine using the Old Town Landfill Site on Stone Church Road as a site for a true community solar farm. Now, I know that you, Ed Roberts, had explored this site, okay, and you were so backed, right? But you found that the cost to install a cable from Mount Trash Ward down to the utility poles on Old Stone Church Road was, of course, prohibitive. What I offered to, offer is that this board would consider my recommendations for life work, and I will offer my help in researching the matter, contacting local, county, and state government officials, utility companies like Central Hudson, and yes, and, now, listen to them, they're going to doubt what I'm going to say. I would work at forming a committee of interested members of our community who would be willing to contribute their time and professional knowledge and experiences at achieving the goal of a true community solar farm. Perhaps there might be other environmental-friendly ways that the residents of this town would use the site. Creating such a project for the Old Town Landfill or other appropriate sites around the town would certainly meet the goals of the comprehensive plan at creating a major source of clean energy in our community, protect the town's scenic view sheds, as well as make Rhinebeck's community solar energy product a model for other. well as make Rhinebeck's community solar energy product a model for other towns and counties and everything like that. That is what I offer. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Let's see if anybody else would like to...who hasn't been heard would like to speak to us.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Iverson. I'm a resident of the town of Rhinebeck. I also have a business interest in community solar. My company, and I'm part owner of Sun Common, develops community solar projects as well as sponsored solar projects in the region. I know that this has been a long process to get to this proposed law, and I thank you for moving in that direction. I hope that the board does not run with this single amendment. I think that climate change is raging on, and it's raging on quickly, and I think that we're gonna need a lot of small community solar projects in the Hudson Valley in our region in order to fight it and get the resilience it needs. I only have...I have two suggestions, one which I think you've already probably considered, and that's, I believe, as Mike kind of stated, that the roof is the roof. If it's a pitched roof and it has solar cameras mounted on it that are parallel to the roof and not sticking up off the roof like other parts of the solar zoning law require to be, it's a roof, and it changes apart. And so, I would ask you to consider making that change in this site of the zone and construction. But the second point, I think, is a little more subtle, and I hope you do consider this change. In section I of the Solar Zoning Law, paragraph 15, it states in there that the...I'll read this. Exactly, it says, “The maximum height of the top edge of any solar panel shall be 12 feet above ground level when the panel is oriented at maximum vertical tilt.” That clearly is referring to ground mounted solar systems.
Can you repeat that, Jeff?
Yeah. Section 15, or paragraph 15 of section I of the Solar Zoning Law says, “The maximum height of the top edge of any solar panel shall be 12 feet above ground level when the panel is oriented at maximum vertical tilt.” Section I is the section that refers to community, the generation of community solar. Clearly, that statement is referring to ground mounted solar, which I would totally agree that no edge of any solar...ground mounted solar panel needs to be above 12 feet, but without putting the word ground mounted in there, I think this is opening up a challenge to the ZDO the very first time a rooftop community solar project comes before the board. That's a very simple change I would consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Riley. I live on Wortenberg Road, and I just wanted to say that it wouldn't...I don't think the issues of the screening and roof mounting screening would be coming up had the law been written in such a way, the solar law, where these projects are limited to places like that are commercial in nature. By allowing the, you know, these power plants in any neighborhood, you're just asking for people. People don't want these things in their neighborhoods. People want them where they're living. I also don't understand why we need to have tons of these spread out throughout the town of Rhinebeck. I think it would be much more effective and would have been a much more strategic decision to decide on a few sites for these. That could be large scale and could really work out. You'd have less public hearings. I just think it could be implemented in another way. I also feel that although this amendment's on the table right now, there have just been so many issues coming up with with the solar power plant, and it just...I wrote an email to Elizabeth, and I believe I copied the town board on a response, and there's been so many issues, and yet there's one issue comes up where it's not in the favor of Sun Common and Hudson Solar, and everybody's like, “Oh, yeah, we have to change it. We have to change it.” But there have been so many issues that have come up, and we never got any, like, any response to any of those issues. I was even told that I could propose an amendment to certain areas, especially with the lot cover requirements, which don't sync up for commercial versus non-commercial, which we are all aware of though because Elizabeth told me that you talked about that.
You know, could you keep your comments to the law in front of us?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
I thought that there was another...so...
We're talking about the amendments to a law.
Yeah, and I just thought it would be a good time to bring this up because we're talking about other areas.
No, this is a public hearing for a specific law, so it's...
Okay, so my comment then is that people, you wouldn't be having to even write this amendment if the original law wasn't drafted in a way that didn't allow these in everybody's neighborhoods. And, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
I'm David Plumb from 340 Wortenberg Road. Comments are about the revisions are typically related to screening in residential areas, and in a similar vein, based on an article in Rochester Democratic Chronicle, saying that the solar farms and solar plants going around the state is going very well, very important. There are large ones going in farms, and it, again, it's very important. However, when it gets to the point of going into residential areas, that's where the problems begin. So, screening in residential areas is questionable because there is question as to whether it should be in residential areas to begin with. That speaks to the way that the law is written in terms of the zoning. And I just want to point out again that, I think we've said as residents of the Wortenberg area and also for Mill Road, that, I mean, any, any commercial power generating facility should not be in a residential area. It doesn't matter what type it is. It is important that solar is, is coming and growing. That's very important, but any type of commercial power generating facility should not be in a residential area. So, thank you.
Thank you, David. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to the...Michael, before you get up, I want to see if anybody else who hasn't been heard would like to speak to this law. Doesn't seem like it.
I just wanted to add a comment since Paul brought up Senate Hudson's recommendations.
The comment should be a...
So, when Senate Hudson looked at the specific proposal to put these panels on rooftop, based on a letter that said it's no negative visual impact in this particular instance that involved the rooftop. So, I think it's important when you're considering whether the rooftop requires screening, and they're talking about Senate Hudson, that it looked at this specific project and responded that it was not a negative impact.
Yes, the board.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this?
I'd like to offer a comment on Colin's statement there.
No, you're not commenting on a statement. You can comment on the law. We're not going to go back and forth commenting on statements. This is a public hearing for a local law, so you can comment on the local law.
Then, the local law as it exists right now, along with that, that was recommended by the zoning review committee, and many of the elements of the proposed law are supported by Senate Hudson. And those recommendations, and all you have received, those reports that I filed, and I took that information right off their website, and the website supports all the recommendations that I, along with my neighbors, have presented, and that's all I can say on that.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to comment on this? We're holding the public hearing open. Anybody from the board want to make any comments? That's okay. Okay, we're holding this open. Thank you. We're moving on. Is there anything else in here for you? Thank you. Thanks for coming, everybody. This will be held open until our October 28th meeting. Mark Coviella has arrived a little late. We're not quite ready for you. Thanks, Warren. Thank you for everything. Bear with me, everybody. Item number nine, Resolution of 2019-207 Memorialization urging United States Congress to pass the Energy Innovation and Carbon Dividend Act, HR 763. I will make a motion in a second. Is there any...for the public, we had a presentation in our last meeting. This is a resolution in support of a bill in front of the United States Congress, House, that would provide for a carbon fee for companies that generate carbon, and this is a resolution from the town of Rhineburg in support of that act. I want to thank all the people here for Lori Houston and Hannah Bruckner, our local climate change groups. It's brought this to our attention. Are there any other comments or questions from the town board? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you for your work with us on this. You're welcome. I know that Mark Coviella is here, so we missed you at the beginning of the meeting. We're glad you could make it. Why don't you come on up and talk to us? Sorry, when I skip around out of order, I confuse myself easily, so...
I do apologize.
No, no apology.
Quite engaging, right? I do appreciate you having me here today.
Of course.
And to the town board for having me here today. My name's Mark Coviella. I'm the director for Dutchess County's Division of Veterans Services, and I've been going around to every town in Dutchess County just to present myself to the board, so the people that represent constituents throughout the entirety of the county, the veterans that live in your area, you guys could disseminate some information down to them, and I've set up a Veterans of the ASOM network throughout Dutchess County, and Supervisor, you will be there.
Elizabeth, you can say Elizabeth. It's on the 23rd?
It's on the 17th, actually.
It's close enough.
Close enough.
In my mind, yeah.
Next Tuesday.
Double digits.
I look forward to you being there. We have representative from each town come and learn about veterans' benefits a little bit more in depth.
I think that Mary and I are coming down together.
Fantastic. I'm really looking forward to you guys being there, and again, you know, sometimes, I go to the...not sometimes, all the time. I go to the VFWs and the legions, and I see the guys who are very...guys, women, and men who are very engaged post-service, but a lot of times veterans will get out. See a lot of veterans in Vietnam era that really kind of stray away from their veteran identity, and they're not exactly engaged, or even a lot of the veterans that are my age getting out now from Iraq and Afghanistan don't necessarily join the VFWs or legions, and they're not engaged in veterans events, and that's fine. They don't have to be. I just don't have exposure to them, whereas you guys, the town boards, represent, and you know all the people in your towns. At least you should, right? You know, I remember when I was a county legislator prior to this position, I represented Beakman, and I would go to the gas station, and I would call, you know, John, you know your people, and again, you have exposure to people that I don't, so I want to make sure that you guys know who I am, so you have veterans in your town that need help, you know, who to call, you know, you have a friendly, familiar relationship, and again, you know, what division does, just before I leave, I'll make this very brief. It's different than the VA, the federal VA, right? Castle Point, Montrose, those are huge medical facilities. Dutchess County Division of Veterans Services is just myself and four other staff members. We represent veterans and obtaining their benefits or services or whatever they may need in all sorts and array of different topics, but it's much less intimidating for them to come into my office and, you know, see one of our staff members or myself. It's much less hectic. It's not as intimidating to walk into a hospital or administration building full of a thousand people, and you don't know who to go to. By the time you leave my office, you know everyone's person, right? Very friendly, very easy to navigate, alright? The office line there, you guys write this down, 845-486-2060. If you have any veterans in your town whatsoever that need anything at all, please call me, alright? I'm also gonna give you my cell phone number if you'd like, 845-240-4381. I give that out, so I like to be as accessible as possible post 5:00 PM. If there's a veteran, if there's a homeless veteran in the street here, I don't care if it's midnight, blow up my phone until I pick up, and we'll make sure that person gets taken care of. I promise you that. We have a lot of programs and funding here for veterans in Dutchess County. Very proud of how well we take care of our veterans here in Dutchess County, and we can do whatever it may need that veteran may need, and I'll make sure that happens. So, do you guys have any questions for me?
I do. I have a comment.
Yeah, sure.
I know that there's a new state law that just enabled us to waive fees for active service members who are getting marriage license, so we will take that up at our next agenda.
Yeah, I saw that Governor Homewood decided.
Yeah, I mean, there's not...we have different exemptions for veterans in our town, in our local taxes, our land taxes, they give taxes, which we do, and anytime a state law enables us to give considerations to vets, we're happy to do it. So, we will be passing a resolution to waive marriage license fees for active service people.
I appreciate that, and just to know, I speak with a lot of, all the town supervisors throughout the county in just regular business, and Supervisor Spencey has been very communicative with me and very friendly, and Elizabeth, I very much appreciate that. So, thank you guys for having me here, and thank you for the time.
And before you go, I know because we were playing phone tag on Friday, and we left up, we'd see each other tonight.
Yeah, we did see each other.
You had a question about a constituent, a resident who was a veteran about a tax exemption. Did you...were you able to speak with our assessor, or was somebody able to speak with our assessor to figure that out?
Yeah, actually, that veteran had come into my office today, sat with a veterans counselor, and got the proper tax exemption form for the status of that veteran. It was a...I think that person was listed as a Cold War era tax exemption, but they were entitled to a combat era veteran tax exemption. So, we had given them the proper documentation, and they will present that to the tax assessor.
Fine, yeah. Just so you know, we have a very...our assessor's aide is very, very diligent about following up on all exemptions, so I asked her what this could have been since we did a...and she said she thought it was a Cold War veteran versus a...
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what it was.
Okay.
Yeah, so same care. Was there any questions? Please call me.
Thank you for coming, and I'll...
I'm interested, at least, to understand the gamut of the range of services.
Yeah, sure, absolutely. The county website, if you go to the departments...
Just on the county?
Yeah, on the county website, you go to departments, divisions, veterans, you know, you'll see the veterans go right there, yep. And actually, on that, I will note that we have a community calendar, and a calendar of updates I implemented when I took the positions director over a year ago. Every month, we put on updates, VA updates. Laws are constantly changing, regulations are constantly changing with healthcare and things of that nature for veterans, so every month, there's a pretty extensive and in-depth summary of things that have changed. So, again, I welcome you guys as representatives of your towns to take a look at that and share if you, you know, care for it, alright?
Mark, thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you so much for having me.
See you on the 17th, not the 23rd.
Absolutely, Susan, I appreciate you very much. Take care, you guys. Any questions from anybody here before I go? Any veterans here? Alright. If you guys know any veterans, please send them my way, though, okay? Thanks.
Thanks. Bye-bye. Since we're going out of order here, I know, we have somebody who would like to talk to us about the Rhinebeck Clean Power Expo, which we're happy to, since we're all about renewable energy and clean power and lowering our carbon footprint. Would you please introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Vanessa Bertozzi here in the village, and, yeah, keeping on the theme of renewable energy, on October 6th, I'm volunteering to organize a local event just for the Rhinebeck community, and we're calling it the Rhinebeck Clean Power Expo Walk the Talk. So, on October 6th, actually, right here in town hall, this will be the home base. We'll have exhibitors talking about solar, geothermal. We'll have some electric vehicles outside that folks can come and check out, but even more than that, I'm thinking of this as an activation of the community here. So, I'm putting out a call to local village businesses as well as local environmental organizations, even high school... organizations, even a high school environmental club, to partner up. So, a local village business could offer to host an action and so participants could walk through and really take away, what is my personal action item that I can do to green my home, my lifestyle, the way I drive? So, it's sort of an experimental format for an event, but I really hope that it will be by the community, for the community. So, if anybody is interested, they can reach out to me. Again, my name is Vanessa Bertozzi and I have a link I can read out. It would be bit.ly/rhinebeckexpo call. So, B-I-T dot L-Y slash Rhinebeck Expo call. And that has more information in a call for businesses, organizations out of the state parts. So, as I mentioned, we have Town Hall. I'm also working on getting the event permit from the village to be able to have displays or tabling out on the sidewalks in the village. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Kind of banking on the organic traffic, foot traffic from the farmer's market, so hopefully the nice weather too.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
Back to our regularly scheduled, move back to the beginning here. Tab number one, I will make the motion for Resolution 2019-199 for our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tracy. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-200 for our preliminary accounts payable abstracts. Fifty-nine checks totaling $225,520.75. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Is there any discussion or any questions here? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2019-201 for our capital projects checks, three checks totaling $200,000, $209,000. $200,000 plus $900. Thanks, Tracy. Is there any discussion or any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. But just again, because I am the Chief Financial Officer, I like to move the financial resolutions. Resolution 2019-202, reappointing our sole appointed assessor for a new six-year term. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, Josh. This is a statutorily mandated six-year term. All sole appointed assessors in the state of New York serve six-year terms that start on September 30th and end on September 30th, six years later. We are moving to reappoint Matt Savia as our sole appointed assessor. Any questions or discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. I need a motion for Resolution 2019-203 for Recreation Fall Program for Hapkeeta.
What is it? Your guess is as good as mine, but I, so moved.
Okay, thank you, Alan, may I have a second?
Do you know what it is?
Well, let's get it to the floor.
Oh, I see, okay, sorry. Josh, this is about a second.
Josh? Josh, oh, second. Yeah, there was an email that came out. It sounds like a movement, sort of Tai Chi, and it will be in the school.
Sorry, it's Akito-ish.
Akito-ish, yeah.
Haikido.
Haikido. Oh, Akito, sure.
And it's the usual arrangement. The instructor gets 75% of the fees and the town gets the rest.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-204, shift of certain maintenance department funds from replacement of electric light at the dock to purchase materials for repair of seawall. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed, may I have a second? Thank you, Alan, who wants to talk about this?
I just want to say it's more expedient to fix the dock, which is a stolen carton, than it is to fix the overhead lighting.
Well, but this is, why don't?
I'm just moving, it's a pleasure. We're going to do that first before the lighting, that's all.
So who, like, how did this come to us? Is this something Bobby wants to do?
No, I went down and looked at it. It's pretty bad. So seawalls need repair.
Do we have somebody to do this and how much?
Bobby and Adam.
How much are we shifting?
Whatever money is there, it's not, it's not on the.
I'm not, I'm not so voting for this because I don't know how much there is and what it is.
You check the forms and it's equivalent to the electric.
Is there any other discussion? I would, I don't understand why we're doing this. I don't, I like the capital projects to.
I know, but.
And I don't know how much it is.
I don't have the numbers here for the notice equivalent to the electrical overheads, which is usually the electrical to the dock, that's all.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? I'm opposed.
So I?
I need more information, Paul.
So it's up to me.
I agree.
It's neat, it's like the dock is stolen.
I understand.
And the lighting is.
It'd be nice to know how much money we're talking about.
I don't, I don't, I've got so many figures going through my head.
But is it a physical light versus a seawall?
Just the lighting, I think it's the lighting that I need.
I mean, it's a little too.
But this is like rotting seawall.
How can Bobby and Adam fix the rotting seawall? I mean, I grew up on the water, you need large companies with pile drivers and.
I mean, it's just, just.
Okay, I just, it's not that I don't want to do this, I'm opposing it because I don't have enough information, so. It's down to you.
We're on now.
Okay, this will have to come back with more information.
Okay.
All right? Great. It's not a bad thing, just, we need more information. So what's in there? Item seven, Resolution 2019-205 for the hire of seasonal help for the maintenance department.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
Whose resolution is this?
Sure is it. Ed, it's your, it's your resolution, right?
Right.
Item seven, maybe just speak about it.
Oh, you'll be told.
Out of its pocket.
Oh, yes, we've got a lot of projects going on. I had a list of projects, they, more than, dock was part of it. Dock, cemetery office has to be completely renovated, the ceiling and concession stand will be done, guardrail along the rec park wall has to be.
Do we have funds for this?
Yes, yes.
We are. And is, is this compliant with civil service?
Yes, it is, I asked Shelley, I checked.
And is this fee an increase?
No, I think it's an increase of 75 cents.
So it is an increase?
Yes. From 1425 to 1500. What do you, you need help badly, that's all I can say. There's a lot, we have no labor except for Bobby, that's it.
No, we do, we do need help.
There's nobody at the cemetery to help Moe. There is nobody here but Bobby, that's it. He's everything, Gary's everything at the cemetery. Adam can go over and Moe and Lou can help out there a couple days a week.
So is his civil service compliant?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
On October 5th, it is.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Thanks, Ed.
I'll give you information on that.
Yeah. Item number eight, Resolution 2019-206, endorsing certificate of substantial completion and authorization of payment for cemetery wall project. Make a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ed, may I have a second? Thanks, Alan. This is.
It's just the proof that everything has been completed and needs involvement by supervisor.
So, and it has been completed. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. It's an amazing job, they did it on, before schedule and we even got a beautiful plaque on there. So thank you for all your hard work on this.
I like to do dedication.
That'd be great. We love dedicating things. And you did a fantastic job. We've gotten so many compliments on this, it's just tidies up the southern gateway to our town, so thanks again. Okay, we did nine. Oh, okay. Item 10, Resolution 2019-208, opening a new bank account to replace closed bank account. I will make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. This is an odd little quirk of New York State Controller law. Once you make too many withdrawals from a bank account, a certain type of bank account in the town, they need us to close it and open up a new one. So this, I think, was a function of the rec department of doing something this year. Chelle has requested that we allow her to open a new bank account.
Wears out the account.
Yeah, wore it out. Is there, are there any questions for, here? Whereas the town's general fund A bank account with M&amp;T Bank is a special interest-bearing account that is restricted by federal banking law to a certain number of transfers per month. And whereas an attempt to correct a deposit slip error, the bank made a debit, in an attempt to correct a deposit slip error, the bank made a debit from the account that was in excess of the federally mandated limit on transfers. And whereas the federal banking rules require that the account now be closed and a new account open. See, I told you this was bussing. Federal laws restrict the amount of transfers we can do in an interest-bearing fund balance account. We, the bank corrected a deposit error and thus tripped the amount of transfers we can do in a year, now we have to close it and open up the same one. It's federal banking law.
So it's my debit account, it's not a non-interest-bearing or something like that? It's not debit account?
Yes.
Just different numbers?
Yes. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Oh, that's a good one. Item 11, Resolution 2019-209, Order of Consent with New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Settling Civil Liability for Lapsed Registration of Bulk Petroleum Storage Tank Facility at our Highway Department. Let's get it to the floor. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks, Ed, may I have a second? Is that Alan?
Yes.
Thanks. Go ahead, Ed.
Have this happen for two years without anybody knowing.
This is a question for the Highway Superintendent. This has to be done every five years, this is posted in the Highway Department. This was received by town, at the Town Hall for the Highway Department. It was forwarded, everyone seems to be aware of it, wasn't done.
And what's the charge for this?
Down from $33,000 to $1,300 to $1,500, the lowest the DEC will go. This is not our responsibility, it's the Highway Department's responsibility. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2019-210, Setting Public Hearing for Our 2020 Fire Contracts. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thanks, Alan, may I have a second?
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. When are we setting fire contracts for, the 28th, John?
For the 28th, yeah. I went through all the list of properties that are covered in the Fire Protection District by Hillside Fire Department and Lincoln Fire Department. And essentially, the ratio of property values in the Fire Protection District and in the fire districts has remained the same. I mean, and so, in effect, we're good to offer them.
When we revised our contracts, it wasn't based on calls, it was based on assessed value.
Right, yes.
And we're assuming that the, once it's been set, the assessed value remains quasi the same, and you've checked it. Now we're giving people increases.
Well, in one case, we're going to have a slight decrease, but it's just a few hundred dollars. The idea is to treat, okay, let me start again. There are two fire districts in the town, they tax the people that live in those fire districts, one's Hillside, one's Rock Cliff. The village has a fire department, and the fire department of the village is paid for by the residents of the village because it's part of the village's budget. However, those three areas cover only half the area of the town. The rest of the town is in what's called a Fire Protection District and it's our responsibility, the town board's responsibility to contract with fire departments, you can pick any fire department to protect those areas. What we've done is we have contracts with Hillside, Rock Cliff, and the village to cover that Fire Protection District. What I did was, came up with a formula which said, let's treat the part of the town that, let's say Hillside covers, as part of their fire district from the point of view of revenue for them to cover. So basically, we took the assessed value of the properties that they were covering for the town and the assessed values that they were already covering in the fire district and assumed that that assessed value totaled would be the tax case for the whole, for their budget. So in effect, we're paying roughly 24%, 23% of the budget of Hillside and roughly half the budget of Rock Cliff. I don't remember the exact number, but there is substantially the same.
But this is just setting a public hearing for these contracts for the 23rd.
Right, I just did, okay, so.
Thank, yeah, I know you work hard on this and.
Yes.
You know more now about the taxation structure of every fire department and portion of the town Fire Protection District, probably anyone in the history of Rhinebeck, but we're grateful.
I've become indispensable. But I, by the way, while I have the floor, what I propose to do is to get the fire departments together with us after all the smoke clears on the budgets and try to figure out a more rational way to do this. Because there is some dispute over which fire departments cover which areas, in terms of, if you go by lot number, there are some lots that seem to be.
Some lots are bifurcated.
Yeah, they're, they're split half, and it's ridiculous. So, I'm going to call the 911 people and get what they think the coverage is, because when you call 911, they call a fire department, so they know which fire department covers which address. And if we get that information, then we can make a map by parcel rather than by straight lines on a map that cut across lots. For instance, my lot is in two different fire districts, which is crazy because only one fire department ever finds it at some point.
We would need to do either a meet and bound description or, you know, some kind of, we could, yeah.
I asked, I asked, the.
They're already having us there.
Been updated, I think we don't need to do meet and bows, we can make a list of problems.
Oh, great. Okay, well, thank you. On the floor is a open resolution to set a fire hearing for our next town board meeting. Are there any other questions or comments from the town board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So moved. We have some new business before us, yes? Resolution 2019-213, Permitting Recreation Stand Concession Air Store Kitchen Equipment at the Pool During the Pool Offseason. May I have a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Cheryl Brown operated the concession stand at the pool this summer, and she, we would like to have her come back next summer. And what this resolution does, it permits her to keep her equipment and use her freezer and all that in the, during the off-season.
Is she going to be accessing it in the off-season?
She'll be accessing it from time to time, but then in return for that, she'll keep it clean. Rather than have us put a cleaning service in there, which is what we did last night.
Does she have insurance for this year, or is her insurance an issue?
Yeah, she will have insurance.
Is she going to be using it, or is it a stor...
She may be storing things that she'll use from time to time, so she may be accessing...
Is the rec committee in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'm saying no, I'm voting no. Motion passes. Resolution 2019-213, permitting recreation, oh, no, that's what we just did.
What, 214?
214. Resolution 2019-214, extending employment term for part-time recreation laborer. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Alan, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ed. This is to extend our recreation maintenance person that did a fabulous job.
Right, for another, for another few weeks.
Great. Any, any further discussion?
Yes, we need, we can get, good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Just one other thing, met with our newest town board member, Josh Pulver. We have been, not had a liaison to several departments, and Josh has graciously offered to take over the things that haven't been covered for the rest of this year, and then we can do further swapping next year. But Josh is hereby appointed to the Trails Committee that will be looking at building the trails along Rhine Cliff Road from the gardens and along Astor Road from the gardens to extend to the woods. The Thompson Mazarella, Thompson Mazarella Park Committee with Alan, the Planning Board, and the Town and Village Environmental Committee, and also if Alan needs help with recreation. So, thanks, Josh. And the Town and Village Environmental Committee, I think I said that.
Right.
Thanks. Is there any other business before the town, or any reports, or...
I have a little bit about, about the summer program. The camp ran six weeks this year instead of seven prior year. The average number of participants went up from 46 last year to 52 this year, so we had virtually the same number of camper weeks, if you will, in six weeks that we had in seven.
Right.
And the feedback from parents have been very positive.
It seemed like, I mean, our new camp director was amazing.
Yes, yeah, things worked out really well. The weather being good made a big difference, too, so we can't forget that. I will have a financial statement about how the programs did between expenses and revenue.
And we'll be talking about that a third time.
We'll be talking about that a third time. As everybody should know, we try to keep that zero balance kind of a feel.
And we also have had some, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yeah.
We had some input from an independent residence group, of residents from the village and town, asking us to look at sliding scales and different things so that rec for the summer can be affordable to all Rhinebeck resident children. So a subcommittee has formed of their own coalition and are helping the rec committee look at this affordability of summer camp. I don't think we have anything else, is anybody else?
I just currently neutralized the rec part today.
Great. Thank you.
I missed it, what'd you say?
I'm neutralized.
Okay.
I do have to set budget meetings, and I think I can do that at our, our next meeting.
You did give us a schedule.
I did?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Maybe two weeks ago. Remember, you'd said it was tentative, but...
Okay. I will, I'll do that formally at our next town board meeting.
Sure.
You're almost ready? Great. All right, well, let's beat this, we can go on with everything. I know you've got a lot of capital projects, and we have a lot of fund balance to fund a lot of them, too, so. All right, motion to adjourn? Second?
You didn't, you didn't let me talk about pickleball.
Okay, I'm going to take back the motion. Did you want to talk about pickleball?
Very, very quickly. I will spare you background details, but I had the opportunity today, almost as an impromptu matter, almost no notice, to make a presentation to the Rhinebeck Rotary Club. And I had to pick a subject. So I picked pickleball, and you'd be amazed, almost nobody there had even heard of it before. So I had a, I'm not kidding, yeah, I'm serious. So I gave a report, I talked about, as I usually do, the background, the history, the growth, and all of that, and to talk about what we've been doing, which also enables me to make this comment, on the Friday evening of Labor Day weekend, between 5:30 and 7:30, on our two courts down at Thompson Mazarella Park, we had 18 people playing pickleball and rotating, the games are pretty short because of the scoring system. It was unbelievable. And I'm continuing to make some progress at the high school with Joe Phalen to get a program set for the winter time. There's some issues involving lines and nets and stuff, but I think it will, it will happen. And that's my report.
Thank, thank, I'm sorry.
I could just tell you if you'd want to.
I was, sorry, I didn't need to be short there, so, does anybody else have any pickleball reports? Reports? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, good night, everybody, we'll see you in two weeks.